Welcome to the Rutland City Board of School Commissioners Meeting, September 8. And so first of all, today is opening day of school, so kind of some excitement coming up in our agenda here. And congratulations to everyone that's made it through, and I see our administration is still hanging on there at this hour. So we'll get moving on our agenda, and first item is our roll call. And I believe all commissioners are in attendance with the exception of Commissioner Seward. So if the secretary can note that. And then we will... Pledge of Allegiance. Actually, I did those in the wrong order. It's my first day at the job. So if I could invite everyone to that wishes to join in the pledge of allegiance. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved?
Second.
A second? Okay, thank you. So then, any discussion? Any changes? Okay, so all those in favor of the agenda as presented?
Aye.
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 And any opposed? Okay, so we are good to go with the agenda. So the first part of the agenda is our regular or consent agenda. Just for those following along, it contains the minutes of the previous meeting, a personnel memo number 613, summer professional development report, and the second reading for two policies. Policy 6340, Theft of Services or Property, and Policy 7698, Child Nutrition and Wellness. So I would entertain a motion to take up the consent agenda?
So move.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. So it's consent agenda, so no debate. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And any opposed?
Allison, I don't mean to, Charlene is asking if we can see her.
She messaged through the chat.
Yeah.
Can anyone see her? I...
I can't see her, but I just didn't want us to...
No.
Oh.
Charlene, speak up if you can hear us.
Oh, there she is. I see her now.
Hi.
Ah.
I was stuck somewhere. I could see everybody and the whole thing was going on, but yet I was nowhere to be found. So it was weird. I went back out and came back in, and now I'm here, so sorry.
All right, you're stuck in cyberspace. Thank you.
Somewhere.
Okay, so I guess we can amend that. All commissioners are present. Did you need any... So we voted to approve the agenda, and now we're on consent agenda. Do you have any concerns, Charlene? No. Okay, so since that was unanimous, we will move ahead. The consent agenda passes. And the next item on our agenda is communications. So first, a couple things. We're going to have an opportunity for public input on non-agenda items, as we always do. And then the second thing under communications is a presentation of proposing the mascot that was brought forth by Amanda Goke, and her team is going to do a presentation on that. And so if there are members of the public that would like to speak on that matter, they'll do so after the presentation and after the board discussion on the matter. There'll be an opportunity, and as the same with with all the agenda items. Some people have registered as attendees and have a little bit different access. And so there'll be an opportunity then, and as we had done before, the question and answer will be open. And we're trying to use the technology a little bit better now and have some opportunity for people to actually speak. That being said, I know that Buzz has been around there regarding the...
Allison, can I... Allison, can I stop for a minute? I just got a message from a taxpayer that it's not being livestreamed. They can't find it. Either on Facebook or through the school webpage.
Oh, I'm trying to livestream it. It keeps crashing on me, so I'd like to apologize. I'm going to keep trying, so...
That's okay. I would just say that we, this is a very sensitive subject, and I think it's one that we need to wait for the livestreaming to be up and around.
Okay, I'll try again.
I do agree with that.
May I ask that we ask the chair to speak except for it's an emergency? And may I speak?
Yes.
Are we recording this?
Yes.
Okay, so we should put a time limit on how long we're going to hold up the meeting.
Yeah. It is, you know, being recorded. People, anyone that registers as an attendee, I believe, has access. So I think we're using the technology the best that we can without interruption. So as I was, as I was discussing, so the, this has become very inflamed in the community topic, and we will be having... I'm going to have an ad hoc committee of the whole, the whole board, October 6. We are going to have a meeting to discuss just the mascot. That will be the only item on the agenda. And that way, we can keep our board meetings to our regular business and not get behind with everything else going on in the school world and still give the time and consideration that this matter deserves. So this is not the only time it's going to be discussed, so if someone can't watch it live, it will be on the video, and there will be another opportunity to discuss. So I don't know that we necessarily have to hold up everything at this point. So that being said, is there anyone that would like to address the board on an agenda? I'm sorry, on a matter that is not on the agenda?
So we have a, I apologize, there's a technical difficulty because Patricia is hosting and trying to get the livestream going. She is the only one who can, at this point, move anybody from an attendee to address the board. And so I'll just give you that information and say, may I, the solution may be to move on and come back or to wait a moment. It's up to you.
Do we foresee a change in the next few minutes?
Let me just see what Patricia's got going.
I apologize. I am trying to get it to go live, and I'm trying to watch two different windows, so it's hanging up.
May I ask that we adjourn for five minutes and come back? And give Patricia a chance to get her stuff? Because maybe sometimes it works when you go in. I don't know.
I, um... It's either going to work or it isn't, and I can't tell you why it's not working right now, but it's unable to do it on Facebook Live. Let me try, I can try and steam, stream it on YouTube, and that's our last option. And I can't explain to you why it's not working, but it is not.
I just have a question for point of order. If we're not livestreaming and this is a public meeting, are we then still included as a public meeting? Or do we have to adjourn to another time so that way this doesn't come back at us because we weren't allowing the public to be there?
The public is allowed if they register, so it is...
But they're not required, they're not required to register for an open meeting. They just show up.
Yeah, no, Hurley, it's, it's, this is, this has happened with this technology quite a bit. We're fine.
Okay.
We're fine with it, I think, especially if she can attempt to put it on Facebook. Let's give her another minute, though.
I'm just trying to find it. I believe the requirement is that it's recorded and available in archives.
I'm going to hand it back over to Rob and see if he can push it out to Facebook. He's going to try it now because it's not working for me.
All right, I'll watch for it, and I'll give it a shot as soon as I get it back.
And the statute, the only requirement is the board must allow public access to the meeting by telephone.
And is the telephone number posted?
With the access to register, yes.
Okay.
So broadcast. Live on Facebook.
And the recording says it's required unless unusual circumstances make it impossible for them to do so.
The recording is required.
Yep.
Which we're doing, so...
Okay, right now it says it's preparing the livestream. See if it works. Oh, free, where'd it go?
And I believe, maybe if there's someone that's just registered as an attendee, if you could give us a test and see if you could chat or use the Q and A feature to contact the board and just to make sure that that is, that communication method is open. Okay, yep, it's coming through.
Is it?
No, no, the, what people are chatting is coming through.
All right, this says unable. I'm going to try one more time to stream live. It told me to, unable to stream live on Facebook. I'm going to try it one more time. Hang on, let me try this. For some reason, it's taking a few seconds just to go through the prep.
So just so we have some time to kill anyways, I'm going to read the exact statement from the Vermont School Board Association regarding open meeting law with the COVID that was initially from March 30th, but they extended these as long as the state of emergency is in effect. So at public access to electronic meetings. One, when a school board meets electronically, it must use technology that permits attendance of the public through electronic or other means. Two, whenever feasible, the board must allow the public to access the meeting by telephone. Three, school boards must post information on how the public may access meetings electronically and must include this information in the published agenda for each meeting. And then the other topic is recording of meetings is required unless unusual circumstances make it impossible to do so. So I think we are in compliance with the law even without a live feed.
Yes.
So just, just so you know, we're unable to stream. I made two attempts. It, it dies. And like Patricia said, I have no idea why. I have a message from Melissa Connor said they had the same issue with Community Forum and never got it to stream.
Can we confirm that we're, we're taping it, that we're recording it?
My, my window says we are recording.
Yeah, it says it in the top of mine, says recording.
Okay, so Allison, may I suggest that we proceed?
Absolutely, so, so back where we left off. So is there anyone that is on that would like to address an item not on the agenda? And just to be clear, I think a lot of the interest is around the mascot, which that is the next agenda item, and there will be opportunity after that.
Okay, I had a, I have a queue of people that are interested, and I'm going to start with Heather Stevenson.
And this is not on the, not on agenda item?
This is, it's a good question. I think it has to do with the mascot. Do you want me to...
It does, so I can, I can go later.
Thank you, Heather.
Okay, I apologize.
So maybe if we go, I know you had sent me that list too, Rob. So there were seven people that had gotten in touch with administration about gaining access to speak. So I don't have, I guess they could chat us if it was not on an agenda item, and then we would know that right now. Otherwise, we will go through that list after the mascot conversation, or at the end of it, I should say.
Fair enough.
Okay, I do not see anything coming through. Oh, but clerk, I don't know.
No, it says I have no questions at this time. This is a test.
All right, and the chat...
I'm not seeing anything. I'll, I'll watch it.
Perfect, so at this point, after, sorry for the delay.
Wait a minute, Butch Paul has a hand up. Is, um... But Patricia, I can't see that, and I'm not sure why. So is, Butch Paul is looking to speak to something that is not on the agenda?
Not on the agenda. If you want, I can allow him to talk.
Yes.
Coming up. He should be in. Are you there, Mr. Paul?
If you could just, I'm sorry, if you could state your name and your residence and then address the board, thank you.
My name is Butch Paul. I live at 21 Catherine Drive in Rutland. I'm a little premature. I want to talk about the, about the mascot. I'm sorry.
Oh, then we'll have you to speak when, during that time in the meeting. Thank you, Bush.
Technology makes everything a little more difficult sometimes, a little less fluid, I guess, maybe I should say. Okay, so I think we're back on track, and I would like to turn over to Amanda Goke. And she could introduce the rest of her team, and they had, you know, publicly made a proposal through to the school board to bring up the discussion. And also, I believe there was a letter to the editor and things that have kind of started this discussion happening over the summer. So I will turn it over to you, Amanda. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Allison, and thank you to the board for having us. I, do I currently have the capability of sharing my screen we had put together?
You should be able to. You have shared screen at the bottom.
Great, okay, so just give me one moment, and I'll share that. All right, can folks see that okay?
Yes.
Great. Buju, Amanda Indigenousa Koz, Miss Kwabikhaan Indonjiva, Vermont Indaa. Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Amanda Goke, and I am a 2010 graduate of Rutland High School. My tribal affiliation is the Red Cliff Band of Lake Superior Chipewa. The language I opened with is Ojibwe, my ancestral language. I would like to thank the board for having us here to discuss removing the current Rutland mascot and the Raiders moniker. I'll be speaking about who we are, what we are asking, and why. Jenna Montgomery, a current student, will speak about the detrimental climate this mascot creates at school. Andy Casarino is going to talk about the mascot's history. And Marisa Kiefer will discuss community support for the initiative. To begin, I would like to acknowledge the lands where we are currently meeting, the ancestral and current homelands of the Abenaki peoples. We recognize that these lands are unceded and were taken from the Abenaki people without consent through various unjust processes. Our work is to protect and honor the history and people of these lands so that future Rutlanders, whoever they may be, can live in full consciousness of the true history and present of the Rutland area. The campaign to change the Rutland mascot is made up of a group of alumni, current students, teachers, and community members. We are people who love Rutland and want it to be an inclusive place where everyone can feel welcome. It is because we are committed to our town that we want the mascot to be changed to a symbol that can unite all students. In addition to changing the mascot, we are asking our school district to instate land acknowledgements at public meetings, like the one I just opened with. A land acknowledgement is one way to introduce the history and contemporary existence of indigenous peoples on their ancestral homelands. Thirdly, we are asking the Rutland schools to develop an equity action plan, including Native and anti-racist curriculum. We would like to start a conversation around reparations to Black, Indigenous, and students of color. And lastly, we would like to begin a reevaluation of student resource officers who are shown to disproportionately discipline students of color. When I was a student at the high school, there was no education around contemporary existence of Native people in Vermont, nor any mention of local Abenaki history or culture. We believe that our school must be engaged in fostering difficult conversations that reckon with its history. As a Native student attending school there, I believed the myth that Native people had been wiped out of Vermont. What a damaging and isolating belief for any student to hold. I was constantly asked to explain who and what I was, why I looked different from other students. No student should have to make the choice between subscribing to a racialized stereotype or being invisible. At Rutland, I did not learn about the painful history of settler colonization. I did not learn about how Native children across the country were taken from their families, forced to cut their hair, and forbidden to speak their language, like Ojibwe. Native cultural practices were disallowed as a part of the genocidal efforts to eradicate indigenous people and cultures. These policies affected and continue to affect nearly every Native household. My own great-grandfather attended and then ran away from one of the most infamous boarding schools in Carlisle, Pennsylvania, where students were beaten for speaking their indigenous languages and forced to assimilate. The goal was to kill the Indian to save the man. Vermont is not an exception to this history. I grew up just a few miles down the road from the Brandon Training School, where hundreds of Native women were forcibly sterilized. The eugenics movement in Vermont sought to exterminate Native Americans because they were seen as an inferior race. Children were taught to hide their identity so they would not be taken from their families and institutionalized. Indigenous families today still carry these painful stories. It is not a coincidence that the use of the Raider mascot began at the height of the eugenics program in Vermont because representation and power are deeply connected. The article on the right illustrates how easily ideas about racial hierarchy are used to justify genocidal qualities, policies in our community. Studies have shown the psychological harm these mascots cause by reinforcing the limited ways others see Native students and in turn, limiting the ways that we see ourselves. These instances of violence, both the physical and representational, are just as harmful today as they were in the 1930s. Today, Native women are murdered at 10 times the national rate, and the perpetrators of these crimes are overwhelmingly non-native. Forced sterilization of Native women are ongoing. A mascot that reduces complex cultures and peoples to a stereotype is both a gateway to seeing Native people as somehow less than human and a barometer of how American society views and treats us. This is why it is so important to change. I'm going to turn it over now to Jenna Montgomery.
And just, I can't see the slides any longer. They stopped sharing just, I think, over, after the eugenic slide.
That's right. That was the last slide, and I believe Jenna will share her screen.
Amanda, would you be willing to show it on yours? Because I don't have the slideshow open at the moment.
Absolutely, yeah, I'll pull that right up.
Thank you.
Perfect. Oh dear, now I'm frozen. Okay, perfect. Hello, everyone. In case you don't yet know me, my name is Jenna Montgomery, and I'm a rising junior here at Rutland. I'm really happy to be here, albeit virtually, to give a current student's perspective on the issue at hand and how we intend to rectify it. From what I've experienced in my years at Rutland, we really do try to promote intersectional racial equality in our school. As mentioned in my letter I sent to all of you, we hosted a gin conference, raised the Black Lives Matter flag, we literature from outside the Western world, and really try to spend a lot of time engaging in social progress of the world around us. These are all things that make me proud to go to Rutland, but I'm ashamed of how we've handled our native studies and athletics program regarding our relationship as a whole with the native population. My thing just squished me back to Zoom. That's awkward. One second, I'm sorry. There we go, it's forcibly opened Zoom for me. The Rutland High School mission statement, as I'm sure many of you know, claims, quote, "We provide a safe, healthy, orderly environment that is conducive to teaching and learning in a school climate that values mutual respect and dignity." My question is, how can a school cultivate a safe environment which fosters mutual respect and dignity when our own mascot not only glorifies violence against marginalized groups but perpetuates the violent stereotypes surrounding natives? In my everyday life, I see that this mascot allows for a school climate of racism and disallows for a presence of constructive dialogue regarding race due to the fact that everyone writes it off as the way it's always been. I think that one notable example of the dangerous misinformation being spread is featured on the slide Amanda's showing, which is a screenshot from a post from one of our own students. I think that it's very easy to write off the entire movement as a few students and alumni getting offended by something miniscule. I think the problem is much larger than this, however. The American Psychological Association has even called for the removal of all Native-affiliated mascots due to their negative impacts on not only the Native population but also the general...
It's seven o'clock.
That's awkward. The VPA has also encouraged this as well. I know that I have a very limited perspective as a young person, but utilizing what I do have, I personally do not see any diminishing in the quality of education if we were to implement these proposed changes. In fact, I think that it would vastly improve it. This is a public school, so I've gathered that the ultimate goal is to provide the best education for the students, and I do not think this is possible while upholding the current mascot curriculum. I feel as though we are certainly doing the indigenous community a great disservice by not educating the school on Native studies local to Vermont. Before I did my own research, I had no idea about Vermont's history regarding state-sponsored eugenics on the Abenaki, nor the state's refusal to acknowledge them as a tribe. This issue, as briefly aforementioned by Amanda, extends well beyond the mascot. We're proposing in addition to the curriculum in order to introduce indigenous studies local to Vermont as well as a land acknowledgement before sports games after we've profited off their imagery in stolen land for so long. There is, of course, always room for improvement when we're looking into pursuit of racial justice, but as a current student, I think that these changes would greatly improve the quality of education across all demographics at Rutland, which I know is what you're all here to achieve. Thank you, that's all.
Hello, so I'm Andy Casarino. I'm a graduate.
Hello, so I'm Andy Caserino. I'm a graduate of 2014 from Rutland High School and I teach at Burnburn. So to all the Rutland teachers and admin and staff everywhere, congratulations on making it through day one. Very exciting. So I'm going to talk about real quickly is the history at a glance of the mascot, because, Amanda, do you mind going to the next slide? Thank you. One of the most common claims that was made surrounding the mascot was that it was chosen to honor Indigenous people. And one thing, as a history teacher, I teach my students, is when we make claims, we need to support it with evidence. So I was seeing claims being made on both sides, and I decided I would look into the archives to see where the reality was. And when exploring the archives, it appeared there was little to no historical evidence to support the claim that the mascot was selected to honor Indigenous people. Instead, it appears based on the archival research that the mascot was selected by local sportswriters to make their articles more interesting to their readers and to sell more papers because of course, all this is going on during the Great Depression and they're looking to increase readership. The writers use damaging racist stereotypes that drew on tropes such as the vanishing Indian and savagery, as you can see from these articles posted here. The mascot first came into popularity in the 1930s, so it's fits in with a larger national trend of other schools beginning to use mascots in this way. One of the most common stereotypes used, and you can see in these articles, was the action of scalping. And in historical reality, northeastern tribes didn't actually value scalping. They valued taking captive, so it wasn't a common practice for Indigenous tribes of the Northeast. And actually, where scalping becomes very common in American history is during the late 19th century when policymakers, white policymakers, would put on bounties for Indigenous scalps, and that's actually where we get the term redskin from, is you would bring in a redskin, an Indigenous scalp, and get about $500. And these bounties were advertised as far out as in the Rutland Herald. And so from these, you can see that it plays on this idea of scalping even though there isn't really much historical evidence for that, that it was actually a common practice, and that this idea of the violence. Another interesting one to note is that these writers and the school itself interchangeably use the term Raiders, Redmen, and Redskins when discussing Rutland High School and their sporting events. Along with using these words, they also, using these words, they also use other imagery such as Indigenous people as inherently savage and inherently violent, or in some cases, that I found around here, in the Rutland yearbook, as drunks. And then during the 1950s and 60s is when Rutland High School, based on the archival evidence, really begins to embrace the Raider identity. And you can see here some images that were used in yearbooks across the decades of a pen that was used, Redman Scout the Mounties, in the 1960s. And probably one of the most, I think, most glaring examples of how the Raider had been viewed came with the class of 1953 at their senior night, which is the article featured on the list. And it was dubbed "The Last Powwow", and the RHS auditorium was filled with an artificial council fire, teepees, and a totem pole humorously representing class activities. Students dressed as Braves and squaws, and a squaw is an ethnic slur aimed at Indigenous women. And they spent the night reciting, and this is a quote from the article, "reciting various incidents in broken English." The senior night concluded with a group of whites informing the Indian Council, the senior of Rutland students, so they were going to live a happier life on a new reservation. And examples like these can be found throughout the decades, including well into the 2000s. And we decided to omit these because we thought that some of the people who might have created this would have changed their opinion on their beliefs about using the Raider. And historical evidence reveals that much of the usage of Indigenous imagery around high school in the 20th century was often based on stereotypes, gross caricatures, and mocked Indigenous people, and at no point honored them. This is part of our history and we need to address it. And editing a racist symbol isn't enough, as we can learn from other schools. And in fact, the term red was dropped, but in my yearbook, the 2014 yearbook, you can go through, and there is a picture of Indigenous headdress plastered throughout the yearbook. And you can see that you need to change the mascot. You can't keep the term Raider, as we can see from evidence like schools with Stanford, who have struggled for decades to totally remove themselves from this racist imagery. And we must do away with the name and the image entirely so we can start anew and select our own community mascot. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marisa Kiefer. I graduated from Rutland High in 2010. And I currently work at, as a teacher at Rutland Town School, so I am fortunate enough to send a lot of my students to Rutland. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about the widespread community support that this campaign has gathered. We have been really fortunate in starting, or continuing a conversation, excuse me, that has been started multiple times in the past. And I feel like this time, we are getting a lot of quality engagement, and I'm hoping for further success with that. Amanda, can you go on to the next slide, please? Thank you. So tonight at our meeting, we have a lot of folks that are here in support of this change. And we have a lot of people that have also spoken up and given us testimonials about why they think this change is so important for our community. Because Rutland High is all about the Rutland community. So they are going to be presented up on the slide, but I'm also going to take the time to read them because I think it's really important that we all hear what these people have put out there and what they have to say about the change. So this is a quote from Harry Chen. Racism is a public health issue. We are at an inflection point in our national history. Its efforts, like changing the Rutland mascot and the associated Equality Action Plan, that will bear fruit and begin to dismantle the underlying racism that defines our society. I am grateful for and supportive of the grassroots Change the Mascot campaign. It is moving us in the right direction toward a community that values social justice and public health. Thank you. This is from Shayna McGlaughlin. She graduated in 2010 with me. In my current career, I help to educate students and ask them to be graciously curious about Native and Indigenous cultures and peoples in foreign countries. However, as I reflect on my own education as a student at RHS, I was not provided education, opportunities, or resources to learn about the Native peoples' right in my hometown. As a student at Rutland High School, the mascot and lack of appropriate curriculum led me to believe that Native culture in Rutland was a thing of the past and not a current group of human beings that should be treated with respect. As an adult, I have had to put in the work to unlearn these lessons and educate myself. It is my hope that future students have the opportunity and the resources provided by the Rutland City School System to have a more well-rounded and accurate education about Native peoples and cultures in our community. This is from Alex Morgan, who graduated in 2005. Changing a name, logo, or mascot does not detract from any of the positive experiences we associate with them, nor erase any past negative impacts. It does, however, allow us the opportunity to reflect new, inclusive, community values and acknowledge that our history may appear harmless or inoffensive, yet still further a broader culture of disrespect and exclusion to many people. We should all work to foster a culture of greater acceptance and mutual respect. This is from Kate LaBelle. We strive to meet the needs of every student, every day, here at Rutland City Public Schools. We need to make sure our symbols and district culture matches that goal. We cannot both have arrowheads and Raiders and also stand proud and say with honesty that we show up and work for all students. Land acknowledgements are a zero-cost way to add more inclusivity and awareness into our buildings. I have been a part of some amazing summer work groups around race and equality, equity, excuse me, and I know there are some fabulous educators and professionals who are here and want to do the work. This is from Emily Isabel. We have an opportunity to choose empathy here, and we should make that choice. If a school mascot leaves any group feeling hurt, the mascot should be changed. Humanity should take priority. This is from Jerika McGill. I remember when the mascot originally changed during my time as a student by dropping the Native American headdress image and the color red from the name of the mascot. It did not cause any problems to the students, faculty, or families then. Completing that change will not cause a negative impact now. When I heard that this petition was primarily spearheaded by students and alumni with the support of faculty members of the school, I could not have been more proud to have come from Rutland High. I commend the youth and their adult counterparts of the RHS community for taking this action to make their school a more inclusive space, honoring the historical legacy of Native Americans and people of color while paving the way for a more diversity-friendly future. During my time at Rutland High School, we were still known as the Rutland Red Raiders, and our mascot symbol was the head of Native American Man in Regalia. I remember once, a teacher engaged us in a discussion on whether the school mascot should change. My stance was not to change it. For me, it steeped us in our past. The mascot connected me to my family, my friends, my teammates, my community. For me, it represented an interwoven fabric of my experiences, our collective experiences in the good times, filled with laughs triumphing over challenges. At the time, I connected all the good things I experienced at Rutland High School with the mascot. And because of that connection, I believe the mascot honored Native Americans. I was wrong. To begin with, my experiences growing up were not connected to the mascot. My childhood in Rutland, attending the city schools, are fundamental to who I am as a person. The lessons learned taught me to be open, to love, to be kind, to appreciate, to dream, to be dedicated. Those interwoven experiences are connected to the people and the community I'm a part of. Those who taught me the lessons showered me in love and led by example. Those experiences are not to a mascot. Sadly, I was correct too. The mascot does tie us to the past, just not the past I had envisioned. The mascot was forged out of racist imagery and negative stereotypes. It does not represent Native American history or culture, but limits it to illustration. It is a better example of white culture and history and not the pretty side. So I may have been right that it ties us to the past, but I was ignorantly wrong too because the mascot does not and never did honor the legacy of Native Americans. Rutland has attempted to change the mascot in the past, and it did shortly after I graduated by dropping red and replacing the Native American Man in Regalia to an arrowhead. It is the past. It is the past attempts that gave me hope today that we will be able to collectively make the change. I remain hopeful that Rutland, my community, can develop a new mascot, one that is chosen by the community and celebrates our community's strength and dreams. Thank you for listening to our campaign, and we really appreciate you engaging in this conversation with us. We truly believe that it is time to change the Rutland mascot. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you all for the presentation and the information that it contained. So I'd just like to remind everyone that we will be having a forum dedicated just to mascot conversation, and that will be happening on October 6th. And so that we would be able to delve deeper into some of the conversation on the topics that have been brought up. So now, I'd like to turn it over to see if there are any board members that have any questions regarding the presentation. Okay, I don't see anyone. Oh, I see, sorry, I can't see hands on both screens. I saw Kathy and Deana, so Kathy?
I just want to thank you for that presentation. It was really well done. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And Deana?
Just to clarify, on October 6th, so we are going to do a full board type of ad hoc meeting that will also be open to public involvement?
Correct. It will be an ad hoc committee of the whole, so all board members may participate, and it will be community engagement regarding the discussion and a forum in which to discuss this further.
Thank you.
Sure. And any other board members that I missed anything? Okay. This time I flipped screens. I don't see anyone. So then, so the next thing that we have is the public comment regarding this. And just a few reminders, each speaker will be allowed a minute and a half, 90 seconds. The clerk will be keeping track. And just a reminder to keep, you know, discussions and comments civil and to address myself, the board chair. If it's a question that would need to be answered by someone else, I can refer that. We just want to keep all the conversation civil and constructive. So I think, Joanne, do you have the list in order of?
Hold on. I will get them.
I know the first one, Rob, had asked, was Heather Stevenson?
That is correct. I can allow her to talk if that's okay with you.
We'll start off there and then take it from there. Great.
Okay. Come on, Heather.
Hi, I'm Heather Joyce Stevenson. I live at 210 Lincoln Avenue in Rutland. Thank you for having me on. I wanted to say that, give you my story. I am in the first generation of climate change migrants. I followed my father, who moved to Vermont for his health because the climate change is affecting Maryland so badly that he is having trouble living there. I had extreme culture shock after moving to Vermont because it's so white, Rutland in particular, and I went into depression because of that. And I love my dad, but it's sad to say, like, he is, he is in the process of dying. And when he passes, I'm going to think long and hard about where I want to live. And I want to live somewhere that welcomes diversity, and I want to live somewhere that people are going to want to live because it's so diverse. And they'll do that, and Rutland can do that by pursuing anti-racist work and rejecting a racist mascot to build a dialogue that welcomes everyone. I'm not alone in thinking this way. According to a 2018 VPR piece, a fifth of the young people who are leaving Vermont are leaving because it's not diverse enough. And so I'm asking you, as someone who lives here and wants to continue living here, to please invest in that diversity. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. The next person was Amelia Sabatasso.
I don't see Amelia on our attendee list at the moment, so I think we should go past her and then maybe she will show herself in a moment. Who's next?
How about Jacob Pousner?
Standby. Let's see if I can get him. I do have Jacob Pousner. Here he comes.
Oh, hello. Thanks for having me on and congrats on the first day with the kids back. I know you all have put a lot of work into just getting to today. Just wanted to vocalize my support for the goals laid out by the campaign. I think it's much needed. I was pleased to see the other day that the Vermont Principals Association put out a statement that also encouraged the replacement of mascots and their nicknames. And I know that I think the work aligns with a lot of the the equity work that's kind of a refocus across school boards across Vermont. If you got a chance to see the new model equity plan that the Vermont School Board Association put out. Anyways, thanks for having me and thanks for having my comment, and I look forward to the forum on the 6th. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jacob. The next person is Samantha Cohen.
All right, stand by. Samantha Cohen, here she comes. Are you there, Samantha?
Yep, I'm here. Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight and allowing us to make our comments. I'm an economist at the University of Hawaii, and part of my research is to calculate monetary values to things that aren't traditionally measured by financial costs. And I was a student at the Rutland Public School System from kindergarten to senior high school. And so I've been thinking a lot about this issue and the financial burden of changing the Rutland mascot to the Rutland School System. And it's my understanding that there are lots of options for this, such as proposing a phased approach where the sports equipment and the related Rutland Raider and Arrowhead imagery are replaced over time in a financially responsible manner. It could perhaps follow the schedule that sports equipment is typically replaced due to the normal wear and tear of the gear. But more importantly, changing the Rutland mascot will incur financial costs that aren't traditionally measured by money, such as social costs. And it's been incurring the social cost to the culture of the RHS community for almost a century. RHS students who participate in a racist culture that harms Native American students leave the school with racist tendencies which can affect their community. leave the school with racist tendencies, which can affect their communities and themselves in their lifetime after graduation. And more significantly, the Native American students who are psychologically harmed from being discriminated against during their entire high school careers might not be able to succeed in ways they could have if their community had supported them to their fullest. So I just want to say that the financial costs of changing the mascot aren't only monetary, and they don't outweigh the cost of fostering a racist culture that will affect hundreds of students each year for their lifetimes. Thanks.
Okay, the next person is Jill Steigerwald. I don't know if I'm saying that right.
Standby. Here she comes. Are you there, Jill?
Yes, hi. Joanne, you did great. It's Steigerwald. It's a tough one. Good evening, everybody. As you all know, my name is Jill Steigerwald. I'm a 2003 graduate of Rutland High School. I currently live in Colorado, but my parents still live in Rutland, and I spend time there as much as I can, obviously before COVID. While there are many, many reasons for Rutland to consider a mascot change, I'd like to offer examples of local and state leaders around the country engaging in similar campaigns as motivation to those of you responsible for this decision. The reality is, there are thousands of schools in the US still with Native mascots. Since the commitments from professional teams in DC and Cleveland earlier this summer, I've been pleasantly surprised to learn of several school districts in Massachusetts, New York, and other states close to Vermont deciding to make changes to their mascots this summer alone. Several states have taken up the issue also at the level of their state governments, including Maine, Oregon, Washington, Wisconsin, and Illinois. And as Jacob just mentioned, as you know, the Vermont Principals Association just released a statement on August 28th calling for its member schools to reconsider their team nicknames and mascots if, quote, "they perpetuate divisive stereotypes" or marginalized a group of people. So this is not a Rutland-only issue. It's tough work. And it's also not the first time calls for change have been made, have been brought to Rutland school leadership over the years. Today, Rutland has another opportunity to step up and make this necessary change, demonstrating that its schools are a safe, inclusive, and encouraging place for all people of all backgrounds. This message is important, not only for members of marginalized groups to receive, but also for majority groups to truly understand, support, and be proud of. I hope current leadership will rise to this opportunity, as several other schools and institutions have done up till now, and hopefully as many more will do in the near future. Thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration of this issue moving forward.
Thank you.
The next person is Erin Epps.
Here comes Erin. Erin, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you're on. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for the time this evening. As somebody who just very recently moved to the community, I just wanted to share my experience. And the first time I drove through town, one of the most prominent things on your way in is the Arrowhead logo. And so when I saw that, I was quite taken aback and a little uncomfortable, and quite frankly, it wasn't a good first impression. And it really doesn't match the friendly and welcoming vibe that I've really felt from community members here so far. So I feel that kind of as the de facto face of Rutland, it's time for a change for the mascot. So thank you for your consideration of the issue.
Thank you, Erin. The next person is Caleb Dundas.
There he comes. Yes, I think you got him. Caleb, are you there? Let's see. Caleb has been promoted, but I don't see him. Let me try again. More. Caleb, you have the okay to talk, but I don't see you talking.
Can you guys hear me? I think I just got.
Now I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm a Rutland resident. I'm starting my senior year at Rutland High School. And I just want to say a short thing regarding the school's current mascot. So everyone here, whether or not they want the mascot changed, has to realize that at its most basic form, a mascot is meant to unify the student body. And as a current student, I can tell you it most certainly is not. The student body is split up into parties for, against the mascot change. So clearly, a mascot that's meant to unify the student body has failed at its most fundamental duty. And I believe that even if you're against changing the mascot, you really need to realize that. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Butch Paul.
I also have, just, you know, can we come back to Michael O'Brien after that? And I have one other too. He stepped on. Let me get Butch Paul for you.
Okay.
Here he comes. Here comes Butch Paul. Butch, are you there?
I am.
Yep.
Thank you. My name is Butch Paul, 21, Catherine Drive in Rutland. I'm actually a 1968 graduate of Rutland High School. It's been a long time. I'm fascinated by this. Obviously, there's been an organized effort by the presenters that people call and support the process. I just find it fascinating that we live in a culture now that everybody's a victim, that somebody comes into the city, walks, drives in, and sees a sign, and suddenly feels uncomfortable. This is the same high school that raised the flag of Black Lives Matters, an organization that, by its own admission, is structured to destroy the culture of this country. And we seem to embrace it. We're not all victims here. You don't know what's in the hearts of the people in the 1930s and 40s who put articles in the newspaper. You don't know what they were thinking, what they were doing, a much different mindset, a much different mentality back then than we've had since then. Things have changed here. Things have gotten better. This isn't a perfect society. But I find it interesting that these young people who have been educated in the public school systems, who have been, who have been taught that this country is a dishonest and illegitimate country, and everything, the people of Rutland are racist because we've had Raiders in our mascot. I find it very unsettling. I don't know who makes the final decision here. I find it, I just find it scary that we've reached a point in our society that everybody's a racist, everybody's a bigot, we have this, we have this basic. I read the other day that all of us are racist, if we think we are or not, because, because we've been told by the media and by some of the young people in this country that we, that we don't understand how tough it is for them to exist in this culture. I am against this. I can't believe we're even talking about it. I haven't seen a big protest downtown. I haven't seen a run on the high school. I haven't seen people, people sharing their concern about this in the newspapers. This, I believe, was probably a small group of people who have their own agendas. And I'm not, and I'm not convinced that the next mascot won't be wrong. I mean, if it's, who knows what's going to happen next? If it's not what, if it's not what a few people, leftist, leftist-type-thinking people think, then everybody else is wrong. I'm not a racist. I'm not a bigot. I live a normal life.
Butch, I'm sorry, the time is up.
I just, I just want.
Just quickly wrap up.
Makes the decision on this. Who makes it? If this goes the other way, who makes the decision on the mascot? Did you answer that? Hello?
It's under the purview of the school board and the administration, the mascot.
Thank you very much.
In through the question and answer, I had Marina McCoy asked to be added, and I think you have someone else. Rob, I don't know if you saw that.
Yeah, I have Michael O'Brien, Marina McCoy, Ernie LaGuardia, and Sarah Allen. If, with your permission, I would get Michael O'Brien.
Perfect. Thank you.
Michael, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Michael O'Brien. I live in Proctor, Vermont. My son is a 2003 graduate of Rutland High School, a proud graduate. And I've worked for 37 years providing help and support to people with mental health problems. I've worked with the homeless and people in crisis. And so I was a bit taken back in December of this last year when I saw a very proud picture of students and TJ Donovan and Justice John Broderick displaying shirts, talking about trying to support people with mental health issues. And that's something I feel very passionate about, spend my life work. I was a bit dismayed that there was this terrible irony of students, leaders from the state, displaying shirts with racist symbols on them in public. And I had a very strong negative reaction to that in the sense that people were unaware of the damage they were doing to certain segments of our community. And on one hand, a really positive message, on another, a really negative one. You know, the American Psychological Association has called for the retirement of all American Indian mascot symbols, images, personalities by schools, colleges, university, and athletic teams, because it does damage to people. And I don't think that that's what this community is about. I don't think that that's what Rutland High School is about. And I think that we should follow the Vermont Principals Association's recent statement that any mascot, nickname, symbol, or logo that has marginalized racist or exclusionary elements should be replaced to demonstrate what it means to be an inclusive, welcoming, and strong community, because that's who we are.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
I have Mariana McCoy. Is that okay?
So how many do we have lined up? Because we might have to.
Yep. I have one, two, I have two citizens and one, our SRO is interested, but he may be able to wait until the forum.
Okay, I guess if there's three, then that'll be it. We'll end up after that and move on with our business. Thank you.
Yep. So here comes Mariana McCoy. Are you there, Mariana?
Can you hear me?
Yes, so we can hear you now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for having me and for allowing us to speak. I'm part of changing the Rutland mascot. My name is Marina McCoy. I graduated from Rutland High School in 2011, and I'm a proud small business owner in the state of Vermont. Vermont is my home. I'm very happy and proud to say that I'm a Vermonter. With that being said, I went to Rutland Town School growing up. And although I wasn't able to fully understand the importance of living out an anti-racism curriculum, I noticed going from Rutland Town to Rutland High School, how at Rutland Town, we were the Rams. We were an animal mascot, and then going to Rutland High School, where we are now Raiders and Native American. I instantly felt weird about it. I didn't know how to articulate my feelings for it, and I didn't learn anything about that while I was in high school or about the Native tribes here in Rutland and Vermont as a whole. As my education grew, I now realized that it is important for us to have a more inclusive mascot. And I hope that through more calls like this and bringing more awareness, we can switch over the mascot to make it more accepting and inclusive to everyone that is a part of Rutland and Vermont. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Sarah Allen coming at you right now. Sarah? Sarah, are you there?
Hi, I'm here. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am a Rutland resident, and I live on East Washington Street. I wholeheartedly support changing the Rutland mascot, and I agree with all of the incredibly thoughtful points made in the presentation and all of those comments made by those alumni, students, and community members who spoke of supporting this change. I also wholeheartedly support the other recommendations made in the presentation given at the beginning of the meeting, especially making sure that there is very valuable anti-racist education in Rutland Public Schools. I hope that the children and young adults who are my neighbors and Rutland residents have the opportunity to learn about these difficult but incredibly important issues that our community and country is facing, and thank you very much for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you. And I have, I have one more, if I can find him. Standby. Oh, I had him a moment ago. There he is. Here comes SRO Ernie LaGuardia. Ernie, can you hear me?
Hey, Rob. I'm actually going to be all set, but I do want to thank Chairwoman Knott and the school board for, uh, acknowledge me for a minute, so.
You're all set?
Yep. Chairwoman Knott already answered my question, so.
Thank you, and have a nice night.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And again, we will delve into that in more discussion and length on October 6th. So moving on in our agenda, the next item is the school program updates. So first up, we have the Student Representative Report, and I saw Hannah and Isabel on here earlier. So I'll turn it over to either of you.
Yes, so it was a great first day of school for Northeast and Northwest students. After a summer of exciting new learning and preparation for the school year, our team of educators at Northwest and Northeast are eager to work with the students, both in person in our remote learning academy. Some of the new summer learning for staff included Lucy Cockens, Writing Units of Study, and the Summer Institute for Reading at the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project. Several teachers concluded coursework led by our Rutland City Public School educators, dismantling inequity in education with Madison Aiken, implementing and integrating social slash emotional learning seamlessly with Ryan Spalding, and technology workshops with our IT Director Patricia Agner. Our teachers are eager to use their new knowledge in their work with students. That's all I have.
Hi, I'm Isabel. This is my first time presenting, so thanks for having me. Last year, the middle school began working with Rachel Mark, a consultant for the Tarrant Institute for Innovative Education. They developed three goals to support best practices in middle school-level learning. The partnership continued over the summer, with 15 faculty members attending the Middle Grades Institute remotely. The middle school is very excited that they've been able to begin working on these goals, creating new structure for the students by creating advisories for each student that will support the child and their families, build a strong school community with common expectations for students, and a focus on teaming and collaboration through the development of three houses, Birch, Hickory, and Maple, and developing interdisciplinary units to make learning more real and relevant for students. The first of these units is the Identity Project, in which every student and many faculty will explore who they are as a person and how they fit into their families, schools, and the greater Rutland City community. Rutland Middle School is excited to welcome in-person and remote students back to school. Thank you. That's all I have.
Right. Thank you both very much. And the next item under school program updates is the opening of school report and highlights. And I will turn it back over to Rob Bullis, and he's got some of the principals on deck, I believe.
Absolutely. I want to thank you so much for the time to do a quick highlight of how our opening went today. Bill Olson and I, and I'm sure Bill will talk about this momentarily, we were around to every school, walking through, seeing the students who were happy to be there, and the teachers, and the administrators, and all the parents who did so much to prepare for the moment when the doors swing open again and the kids walk in and we're ready to go. It was a great morning. And I want to just give each principal a chance to point out some highlights that they had today. One thing I'll tell you is that Patricia Agner ran a report for me today off of Infinite Campus. And I want you to know that between our in-person and remote students, we had 94% attendance. We were a little nervous that we might drop a couple of remote folks, but I think overall, we had a really good attendance rate today. And I'm thankful to the community for being ready, happy, and healthy to go. And everybody for preparing. We do have a great team. So I'm going to start with Greg Schillinger. Greg, can you give a quick update of how things went today for freshman orientation?
I can. Rob, when he sent the email, asked that we identify three items, and brevity has never been a strength of mine, so I am going to say that my three items are, at the end of the day today, your team of teachers and administrators, we were happy, excited, and thrilled to welcome real, live students back to campus today. It was a great day for just that reason. The ninth members of the class of 2024 engaged in team-building activities and games with their advisory. And also, on a much more practical note, students toured the building and learned things like, which one's the red wing, which one's the white wing, where are the science labs, et cetera. And they found and opened their lockers, which is always a rite of passage. Also, members of the freshman integrated team, which is the team of teachers that teach ninth graders, met with students and presented their shared expectations for all students. We are, again, excited to welcome all four grades of our students. all four grades of our students starting tomorrow. And it was a great day and it made us really happy to be doing what we're doing. So, thank you.
And I'll keep rolling and if there's any kind of Q and A at the end of everybody, maybe we can do that. So Melissa Connor from Stafford Tech, another great start.
Thank you. So today we had our red team on campus, which was about 50% of our students. And we had started out with about 6% of our students choosing remote and we're down, down to about 3% of our students. A lot of them decided at the last minute they wanted to be on campus. It was wonderful to see the students arriving. I kept going into the classrooms just saying it was just so great to see live students in a classroom. It felt like school again and it was awesome. The students, it was really wonderful to see our second and third year students stepping up. They were so proud of being Stafford students and they were showing the first year students kind of the ropes on where things were. And they really stepped up to the challenge. And of course, we had some hiccups, but they were kind of hiccups we were expecting. There were no unexpected hiccups, so I think that was a positive. And the staff really just rolled with it and we had our PLCs at the end of the day and we had kind of asked them to debrief the day. What went well? You know, what do we need improvement? And Kate and I reviewed them at the end of the day and it was nice to see that there were more things that went well than things that we need to address. So overall, I think a great start. We have 11 high schools joining us this year along with several homeschool students. So great start.
Thanks, Melissa. And Patty Beaumont from Rutland Middle School, where there are three teams rocking it.
There are. Thanks, Rob. Thanks for having us tonight. So we had a fantastic opening day celebration for our in-person and our remote learning academy students. It included singing and a poetry reading from two of our eighth graders, Amaya and Emma, so that was super exciting. They had all of 24 hours notice beforehand and they went with it, so it was really cool. Our long awaited opening of our school within the school, if you remember, our Bridges Program occurred today. It was an incredible success. We're very proud of this program and so happy to welcome 19 students of both seventh and eighth grade students who are enrolled in this really innovative program. Students were super respectful today. They were respectful of our health and safety guidelines. They were able to adjust to changes on the fly. So for example, when the buses failed to show up on time today, we all took it in stride and we got those kiddos home and they demonstrated great collaboration by helping our teachers to navigate some of their technology challenges, which I know I'm super grateful for. So thankfully, they're there. And it was just like everyone has said, so great to hear children laughing in our classrooms once again. So thanks and I hope everyone had a great day.
Thank you, Patty. And then serving students of very many different levels over at Allen Street Campus. I'm going to ask Scott Corbett if he had a highlight or two or three that he wanted to share. That was a great stop for me along the way also.
I have to say it was the smoothest open of my career and probably the happiest too. I don't know who was happier, myself, the students or the teachers, but it was great to have everybody back in the building. And I think what I'm happiest about it was like, there was no time lost. It was just forward progress. The kids were right back to working. They were out there in the garden and riding their bikes on their exercise breaks. So it really was just absolutely the best opening of my career and I couldn't be more excited to have everybody back together.
Thank you, Scott. And over to Rutland Intermediate School and Carrie Kors.
We, the excitement that was just abounded everywhere. From the very start of our day, our car line just went down one street, up another. People were just so excited. They were patient. They were kind. The smiles on all, all the eyes of all our kids, you could just see it. The, our hallways with our students as well as already getting their artwork up on the hall is just, just so good to see. We had, I would say flexibility was one of our key words today. Things went very smoothly and whenever there was an issue that popped up, you know, we punted. Maybe we had to have recess first instead of lunch because it was a little delayed, but everybody rolled with it and it was, it just went better than we had hoped. So we're looking forward to tomorrow and all the days to come. So things are good at RIS.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, over to Northeast and Suzanne Engels.
Hey, everybody. The highlights for us, we had great teamwork. If you think about 200 primary level kids and particularly about 70 kindergarten kids, their first day of school ever. We had great teamwork between school and families where there was a wonderful leap of faith of leaving the kids with us in trust and good relationships from the past and good communication with our new relationships. So great teamwork. We had great patience. There were long car rider lines and folks were flexible. Certainly a staggered schedule helped. That was wonderful. And we had great masks. Really cool from Batman to other superheroes to wonderful little kitties and hearts. And we had amazing mask wearers in our school. I was thrilled with how many students kept those masks on most of the day other than to eat and drink. It was really a lot of fun. Nobody could see me smiling all day, but my face hurts from smiling all day. I'm going to go home and just go like this. I smiled all day long. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Suzanne. Last and not least and always smiling over at Northwest, Lauren Pep.
Thank you. We had happy children, happy staff, everyone glad to be back. We had, we had a lot of outside time. We're making great use of our outdoor classroom and a whole lot of tree stump stools that arrived in our backyard several weeks ago as the new seats for children. We have our new Peer Point Personalized Learning Center across the street that's in action and doing great. When I asked a group of kindergarteners today, what was the best part of their first day of kindergarten? One little guy just looked at me and he went, "Well, it's us." And I thought that was fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lauren. And I want to thank the board for giving us that time just to play out some highlights. It is really one of the gifts of being an educator that you get to see school open and you get this cyclical renewal of new life and new year. And it's really why we do the job. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Rob, and all the principals as well for sharing. Next up on our agenda is a central office report, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Olson.
Thanks, Allison. I'll try to make up some time here. I did go around the district. Rob went one way and I went the other. And we did a little circle thing. But it was a lot of fun and it was great to see everyone here. I'll confirm what Suzanne said. I saw that this little boy, Suzanne said, "Oh, boy, that's a really neat mask." He had a little Batman mask on. And she said, "Where'd you get that mask?" And he said, "The store." Of course. So like a little kindergartner for sure knows the logic of the world. But it was great to see everyone there. So we want to thank our families, our staff, our kids, our students for really putting this all together and making it work so well today. It was, it was fantastic. I know that, I'll say another thing that I heard when I was out there traveling around was our, one of our teachers wanted to thank the maintenance department for all the work that they did to make this work. There's a lot of effort that maintenance has put into doing this. And specifically, you know, just getting the, doing the cleaning work it takes to do, to do this, to get ready. And then every day afterwards, you know, I was walking around and seeing custodians wiping down doorknobs and wiping down touch spots. They are now at night doing the cleaning processes that we've asked them to do. We're using, you know, this Clorox 360 machine it's called to help clean up the rooms. So God bless you. And we, we think we have just a great team that's putting this all together and making it work. I'll just say, please, parents and community members out there, we're open today because we've done as a community, a really good job of making sure we're following the health guidelines. And so if we can continue to do that, our schools will continue to stay open. The Department of Health will say that community spirit is not really going to come from inside schools. It's going to come from outside schools. So the more we as a community pull together on this, the more we'll be able to make sure we see these smiling faces that we saw today. Oh, just give a short update on in-service. We had a number of in-service days before school. Day one today. And we were lucky enough to have this, the governor moved the start of classes back, which gave us, allowed us to move some in-service days up to the front. So our staff worked hard on getting prepared for, for today. One highlight of in-service was we were able to invite and host Boar Yang. She's the Executive Director of the Vermont Human Rights Commission. She worked with us in the spring. She was back with us last week. She talked with us, the whole staff about confirmation bias and how it affects our perception of folks and in how it plays out in schools and in the community. So we're continuing, continuing to do that work that we started last year. Next steps will be that Rob and Pam are going to lead our district-wide group on considering questions of equity and how we can get better at serving our students, making sure that that we're treating everyone well and making sure that opportunities are available for our kids. So that work will continue under their leadership. I wanted to thank Allison for attending with me last week in Rob Bliss, VS Vermont Superintendent's Association meeting that brought together school board leadership and superintendents. And that, that's a good setting for us to be able to learn how to communicate better and make commitment to what we're working for over the course of this year. The Vermont Superintendent's Association also has another forum like this for superintendents and business managers. So Ted Plamanis and I are going to be working on that and joining that group to, to see how we can make sure we're ready for the budget season. I'll note one more thing that we have our secondary flagpole at the high school that will be installed. We're delayed on the, on the delivery of that. So as I understand it, I don't know if Michael's here, but as I understand it, we have that coming next week or the week after and then we'll, we'll go to that next step. And I think there's more, more to discuss about that in the policy committee report. So I'll stop there.
Okay, great. Thank you, Bill. I think the next thing up on your central office reports was going to be a COVID-19 associated expense update from Ted.
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to mention a few specifics about the expenses and activities that have been ongoing related to compliance with COVID-19. Back in March and April of this year, my predecessor, Mary Elman Nune, set up a new system of recording compliant with guidelines from the state of Vermont to keep track of what are called extraordinary expenses, additional costs that weren't budgeted that are being incurred in order to obtain things like protective personal equipment, cleaning supplies, various IT supplies that are needed to enable remote learning, et cetera. And the short story is that the district incurred approximately $250,000 from April through June of additional costs for services and equipment and supplies. That represented about a percent and a half of the district's budget for those three months. The good news is that the state of Vermont in utilizing coronavirus relief funds has made available the opportunity to apply for 100% reimbursement of those documented costs. And my colleagues in the business office and I, in the last week, submitted that application to the state. So we're hopeful that Rutland City Public Schools will see those costs fully reimbursed. The state also requested some estimates for what the district expected that it might spend then for the first half of fiscal '21, starting July 1 through the end of this calendar year. And at a high level, we anticipated approximately a half a million dollars in costs for those six months, which also happens to represent about a percent and a half of the district's budget for that timeframe. We did have actual results for July and August, but the rest of the year is of course an estimate and that's, you know, involving a lot of uncertainty. But again, the good news is the state of Vermont through this program that I described also has indicated that they plan to reimburse 100% of those documented costs. And then depending upon the amount of submissions by districts throughout the state, if the remaining coronavirus relief funds are not sufficient to meet 100% of everybody's demands or requests, I should say, then the state will prorate based upon everyone's request. So again, my colleagues in the business office and I, after reviewing with Bill and with Rob, submitted those applications this week and, you know, we're very hopeful and we'll keep you posted. So that's where we are in coronavirus relief expenses.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just realized too that I didn't, did anyone, any board members have any questions for any of the administration or the principals regarding opening days or our central office reports here? Okay, I don't see anything. So I thank everyone for your work and the long day that you all have put in from the, all the principals and the administration. And it's kind of, you know, day one of what you've been working for, for months. And hopefully, they'll continue to be a rewarding experience. So we appreciate again everything that you're doing and putting forth for the students we serve. So and also, you know, thanks to our student representatives hopping on. I think you both probably start tomorrow as upperclassmen. So good luck to you, Hannah and Isabella. So the next item on the agenda is committee reports. And our first committee listed is a building committee, so I will turn it over to that chair. Erin?
Hi, sorry. So just to sort of thank all of the principals and administration, I really, you guys do great work and the enthusiasm shows through. Building committee, we had a meeting the other day and I have like really bad allergies. So Mike had gone over some of the also new costs and requirements for the buildings and to keep them maintained. So there's a lot of new criteria that the staff is working on and so forth. So, you know, just, you know, again, help each other out and we're fully supportive of all of that. You know, new standards, as they say. So Mike, thank you for your work and your staff's work. We also had another proposal come to us in that meeting to expand our solar capacity, which has been discussed. But we're going to bring a recommendation to the full board at a later time. So that's all I have at this time.
Great, thank you. The next committee up is the Policy Committee, so I will turn that over to Matt.
Hi, everyone. For the Policy Committee report, we do have a couple policies for first reading that were enclosed in your packet. And we would need a motion to accept those policies for first reading. The first one in the packet is an update to policy 3140, which was flag display. And what, the updates there, you'll see just address the, the flag that has been flying at Rutland High School right in front of the entrance. And also noted, there's a flag that flies through the athletic fields. And then you'll see that it addresses the existence of this new flagpole. So it's policy that's in place and it supports the administration in creating procedures for how flags should be displayed on that new secondary flagpole. The other policy is a district equity policy. And it's a recommended policy from the Vermont School Boards Association. The committee did work studying the VSBA's model policy. We also studied some equity policies and the language of those in some other schools around the state. And that was the source of that policy that is for your consideration. So I think we just need.
Oh yeah, I'd like to, would you like to, I would like to entertain a motion for the first readings of those policies? If you, someone would like to make a motion?
Maybe someone from the Policy Committee.
Yeah. Would you like to make the motion, Matt, for the first reading of those policies?
Yes, I would.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is for the first reading of policy 3140, flagpole use and display. Okay, so the motion on the floor is for the first reading of policy 3140, flagpole use and display. And also the first reading of policy 770, district equity policy. And again, it's first reading, so. You know, there's an opportunity for discussion at the second reading or in between work with the policy committee. So. Joanne, did you have something now?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is the policy committee running the new policies by? Our attorney?
I know that Bill Mueb weighed in on the flag display. Policy and gave his guidance and we use that guidance heavily in drafting this policy. I'm not sure if Bill checked in on the equity policy.
Equity came from the VSBA, so that was viewed by VSBA attorneys.
Okay. That's just something that probably I just, it's good to know. Thank you.
Okay, so any other discussion? Okay, so the motion on the floor is reading of policy 3140. 70. So all those in favor?
Hi.
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 And any opposed? Okay, since it's unanimous, the motion carries. It's the first reading of those policies. So the next committee report is.
I'm sorry, Allison, I was just going to mention just what's in the works. Next, so. I know that Patricia is reviewing an electronics communications policy. That was sent down by VSBA and is a required policy that we need to add. So, so she's kind of looking that over and is going to. Come back to the committee and folks might have seen that there are new Title IX regulations. And that's also a new required policy from VSBA. And so we're going to be taking a look at that at the next meeting as well.
Okay, great. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, thanks.
So I will turn it over to Dina and staff relations.
So we met last Tuesday. We had a very productive meeting, in my opinion. We kind of started to establish. Some thought process looking forward. With the key perspective of having the transparency and bringing everything kind of. To the full body of the board and then going forward with what we need to do further. And I believe we're going to discuss more later. Yes. So details to come later when we go into our session.
Thank you, Dina. So the next item on the agenda is. New and old business. So one thing that we have in there is an enclosed, a draft of the board calendar for the year, kind of breaking out the topics. I know Bill and I believe Rob put in a lot of time to make sure we had everything slotted for the appropriate time on the calendar and that we weren't. Missing anything, but certainly if you take the opportunity to review that, if anything sticks out at you. And I know with the finance and planning committee, the idea is to get some timeline in these planning things. In place so, so that we would actually have a board calendar to make sure we're, we're following along. So. That is available for everyone's review. And is there any old business to come before the board? Seeing none, any new business to come before the board? Okay, seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move that the Rutland City School, I'm sorry, Board of School Commissioners enter into executive session for the purpose of obtaining. Confidential attorney-client communications. Made for the purposes of providing professional legal services to the district, the general public knowledge of which would be. Would clearly place the district at a substantial disadvantage. We invite Attorney William Mueb, Bill Olson, Ted Plamanos and Rob Bliss into executive session with us.
I second. A second.
Second.
So everyone should have received an invitation in their email.
When did that go out, Joanne?
At the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And I sent a second one too.
Is it the second one, Joanne, or the first? I just.
They're both the same. Okay. Couldn't find it in my. I didn't use my normal email. I used the schools and so I couldn't find it in my sense.
Gotcha. No worries.
I usually do it out of UVM.
All right. So motion on the table to enter into an executive session as outlined. All those in favor? And opposed? Motion carries then and all board members and invited attendees will find an email from Joanne. And we'll see you in executive session. Thank you, everyone.
Motion to adjourn?
No, after.
After, okay.
From an executive session.
Sorry, boss. See you in a minute.
I want to thank all the attendees. We'll be ending the meeting now and see you soon.